Good evening, early birds. We're gonna start our webinar in just a few moments, okay? Welcome.
Selena's coming on.
Charles, what's so funny?
Zev's comment.
Oh, he wasn't even looking. Is he starting troubles already?
Already? I can't believe this guy. I have a surprise for all you guys. I'm not just gonna do a mass demonstration, but I'm not gonna say anymore. Oh, my lord. Hey, it's true, you know, come on.
Absolutely. I hope everyone has had dinner.
Yes.
Okay.
My wife actually made Cuban-style pork chops.
Wow.
Queté Brussels sprouts and asparagus. And she bought a sorbet and gelato machine last week, and she made homemade strawberry sorbet.
Oh, I'm definitely coming over your house.
I'm telling you, isn't that great? The only thing was missing was a cup of espresso, but...
Ah, well, well, then I don't know, okay?
But that was, that sorbet was just... She made lemon, a lemon sorbet the other night, it was wonderful. Now she made fresh strawberry sorbet. And she also made this coconut... It's not, it's not sorbet, I guess it's coconut ice cream out of, you know, fresh coconuts and all that. Boy, I gotta keep this woman, I really have to, honestly. Hello.
All right, we'll wait one more minute and then we'll start, okay? Thank you for hanging in there, everyone.
You think anybody will recognize me? I was talking to a friend of mine the other day. He said, "I went into my bank recently wearing my mask, and the teller's wearing a mask." And she says to me, "This is the first time in the 22 years I'm a bank teller, that I actually am happy to see somebody in front of my window wearing a mask."
Whoa, whoa, okay. Okay. Okay, I am going to stop reading what's in the chatroom because...
I'm not the one writing it, don't blame me.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. We're doing a test run, as they say, to see if people would be more likely to come out at 7:30 after they've had dinner, right, and spend some time with us. As you can see, we've had live entertainment for you, okay? From everybody writing in the chatroom, right, to all the conversation that we've had among us. So once again, welcome, everyone, to the Toro College Graduate School of Business Town Hall meeting for the fall semester 2020. Okay, and why isn't this working? Okay, so what we're gonna do, just tonight's agenda, obviously, I'd like to really welcome all new and returning students and faculty, okay? We had a very different, correct, couple of months, so I do want to welcome everybody back. We're gonna talk today about the reopening plan. We're gonna talk about, you're gonna hear, right, from Professor Vacarino about Career Resource Center, and then we're gonna talk about our planned activities for the semester, in particularly the Moonshot Scholars Program, the Women Entrepreneurship Week that we're gonna host and meet and greet with students, alumni, and GSB board members, okay? Please feel free to use the chat button below to ask any and all questions that you may have. Okay, reopening. I wanted to share with you, okay, what the entrance of 232 West 40th Street would look like. As you can see, this is the lobby, okay, of our building. You'll see signage all over the place. You can see on the floor, right, you have, you know, feet, which direction to go in, et cetera. Then you will also have to complete this form in the lobby. I just, because you see my name on top of here, because I had to sign in, and the basic questions. The building wants to know and wants to have a record of who's entering the building, okay? So that's what this is for. This is for the building management team. Now, this, as you can see on the right-hand side, this black with white, this is the elevator spacing. As you can see, the elevators to 232 West 40th Street, right, is only four people allowed per elevator. Okay, this is our lobby. So, I mean, our entrance before, right? The lobby before you enter our actual floor, this is what you can expect to see on the outside of the floor. You'll see this big sign that says, "Stop feeling sick, blah, blah, blah," right? You'll see some other signage, et cetera. Once you come through that door, this is what it looks like. Again, you'll have directions, you know, one way, and which way you can walk, right? You will see, again, these big signs. The water fountains have been closed, okay? And then you'll also see signage on the inside of the building, in other words, what to do, and et cetera, et cetera. We've had classrooms redesigned. Each classroom will have a maximum room capacity number, all right? And this is to keep social distancing. As you can see here, from the top left-hand picture that you see, right, it says maximum capacity 10 for the room 1106. And then I did a snapshot on some of the classrooms, right? On the top right, you will see, that's our biggest room. And as you can see, it's quite a lot of spacing in between. Only one person allowed for those big tables, okay? And this is 1106, the one below where it says 1106. So I wanted to give you a flavor of what it looks like. In addition, these are the signs that you'll find on the bathroom doors. "Please practice social distancing, whether for men or for women, right? One person at a time, please knock before entering, thank you." Okay, so we ask that all will abide by that before using the bathroom. I know the bathrooms have different stalls, but we thought it best to just be extra sure and just have one person come in at a time, okay? All right, so our campus will be open. The semester actually starts on Tuesday, September 8th, after Labor Day. You're wondering about instructions? Instructions will be available in the classroom or virtually via Zoom. So what does that mean? That means that we're giving students, you students out there, we're giving you the choice whether you want to come to 40th Street and be in the classroom or whether you want to zoom in virtually. However, you must notify your instructors. Please notify them before classes begin. Now, why do I say that? Why should you notify your instructions before classes begin? As you saw from our floor layout, correct, each room has a maximum capacity. We want to ensure that you're all accommodated and that those who want to come into the classroom can come into the classroom, and those who want to zoom in classes, right, at from 6 to 9 o'clock can do so at the comfort from their own homes, okay? So in order to accommodate the, to you students, right, we need to know how many of you are actually going to be in person and how many of you are going to zoom into your class session. So please ask, you tell your instructor, each one of your instructors separately, okay? So they can keep count of who's coming in, who's coming, you know, who's not coming in. If we need to change around classrooms, we will. If we need to create two classrooms, we will. So please, again, notify your instructors, okay? You must wear a mask at all times. This includes faculty, right, staff members, and students. If we're together all at once, we must wear our masks at all time. We all want to make sure that we are, continue to be safe. Now, we also must complete an online health questionnaire prior to coming to campus. You should have received a link where every day before coming to campus, please, you know, log on that link, fill out the questionnaire, and submit it. You'll get a green pass or you'll get a red stop sign, okay? The stop sign means, "Please do not come to campus." And then further instructions will be provided to you as to what to do. The green light means, "Welcome." You're welcome to come into the classroom. And this also includes those of you who are coming in for a variety of different reasons. Let's say you're coming in to see, you know, our Career Resource Center director. You're coming in to see a faculty member. You're coming, you're going to 31st Street, right, to pay a bill. You decide to, you know, come in person. So whenever you come to any one of our campuses, you're gonna have to complete that online questionnaire, and of course, naturally, you need to wear a mask. Okay, so at this point, and please do fill in your questions, correct, in the chat box. I wanna turn it over to Professor James Skip Vacarino, who's the Director of the Career Resource Center, and he will talk to you about career services. Skip?
Thank you, Dean, thank you very much for that introduction. And yes, my name is James Skip Vacarino, and once you're in one of my classes, I'll explain the Skip name and how I got that name, but I currently use it as a tribute to my mother. So that's a little bit about it. Anyway, I am happy to inform you all that the Career Center is open for business. Actually, we never did close. We, throughout the summer, offered our career workshop programs through Zoom, and we had office hours throughout two days during the week on Zoom in the morning and in the evening. We will continue those Zoom hours as well as in-person hours on campus. So I look forward to seeing you all. I did call around recently to some of the executives that I have contacts with throughout the city and got some thoughts from them on terms of what they, how they viewed post-COVID. And here's some of the ideas. And that they say, "Though this is a uniquely challenging time, there are strategies that you can employ and resources that you can utilize to take a proactive and productive approach to career development during this time. And we hope that you will come to the Career Center and take advantage of some of our services, our fabulous and very well-known workshops, our guest speaker series, our networking event." And I do have some indication that there is very, we're very hopeful that we will have opportunities for a career fair in the spring. Another HR professional shared with me that as people are working remotely and adjusting to the new virtual options that they have, they've adopted certain practices and standards that they are gonna sustain. That means that new businesses or services may emerge from the crisis, creating opportunities for students with a more entrepreneurial orientation, researching where some of those trends are heading may lead to some unexpected opportunities for us. In fact, some of them say, kind of jokingly, but we really mean it, that titles and jobs don't even exist in terms of what they may be like once we come out of this. So that's another area that we at the Career Center will be working very smoothly. But we want you to keep in mind that the health crisis that may loom right now, that students should focus on positioning themselves for a fresh re-entry. That means spending time now deeply researching interest fields and employers, perfecting resumes and social media profiles, expanding their network for professionals, and working on their interview skills. And lastly, we must keep in mind that not only does a graduate education increase the lifetime earning capacity, it significantly enhances lifetime learning and communication skills that will continue to pay out in the future. So I look forward to seeing you all on campus, and please come visit us at our, in my office at 1115, room 1115. I look forward to seeing you all there, and enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Professor Vacarino. Thank you, Director, for helpful news, right? Okay, I'd like to now talk about our programs, right, planned for this semester. We have three particular programs planned for the semester. Soon you will hear about the Moonshot Scholars Program that Dr. Reema Arana is gonna be talking to you about. And she wears many hats. She's the Director of Strategic Initiatives from the Graduate and Professional Division. She's the Coordinator of the Center, right, in Excellence in Teaching and Learning, and she's a Fulbright Scholar Liaison, okay? So she will talk to you about the Moonshot Scholars Program, and then I'll come back and talk to you briefly about the Women Entrepreneurship Week. And we're also going to hopefully have a meet and greet with student alumni and our graduate school board members, okay? Again, please don't forget to post any and all of your questions in the chat box that you may have. Okay, Reema, I'm gonna stop sharing, and I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. You're muted?
I'm muted, okay. For some reason, I couldn't pull this up on, on this view, this email in your browser isn't working, just saying. So it's in my email. But I'm so happy to be here. My name is Reema. I am the Director of Strategic Initiatives, and I'm also coordinator of our Faculty Development Center here at Toro College. I'm so happy to be here, and I welcome all you new and old students back to the Graduate School of Business. And let me ensure you, you're in wonderful hands. Dean Mary Lorrain and her team are wonderful, and you are going to have the best time. So just to let you, just a brief recap, last year, as a pilot through the Office of the Provost, we instituted a non-credit-bearing program called Moonshot Scholar Program. So it is for students at Toro College, irrespective of if they are graduate students, professional students, undergraduate students, who are interested in, in the kind of challenges and the kind of issues that are facing the medical care field, healthcare, the life sciences, and giving them the knowledge to, one day, maybe create or be a part of a larger entrepreneurial, innovative business design. So again, it's not, it's non-credit-bearing. You will, depending on the attendance policy that we decide to have for this fall semester, you will receive a badge, a micro-credentialing badge, which you can put on your LinkedIn, your resume, saying you have these new skills. And you are in the School of Business. I don't have to tell you what this means in terms of how such a program can enable you to be a leader in the future. We will, this, this program will give you the opportunity to engage with New York City life science communities by attending various kinds of startups and meetups. You will also be introduced to various leaders in the entrepreneurial world. We have guest speakers scheduled to come every other week. So, so that's it. We would encourage you to register. The best way to do it is to email moonshots@toro.edu. I'm gonna put the email address at the bottom in the chat box, and you can email, register. We will be meeting every Wednesday, starting September 16th, from 5:00 to 6:00 EST. If you have friends in other Toro campuses, they are most welcome to join us. Spread the word, and we look forward to sharing this, that time with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reema, I really appreciate it. Thank you for coming this evening to share this wonderful news with us. I believe we have over like 75 people across the disciplines, across the schools, who already decided to join this Moonshot program. It's very exciting.
Great.
So you're gonna be in great company. So along with the Moonshot program, I am so very, very happy to be able to announce to you that our own Professor Zev Ash has graciously accepted to actually run some of these entrepreneurial activities this semester and the next semester, this year for us. And one of the programs that he is gonna help to liaison, right, is this Moonshot program. So again, my thanks, right, to Zev. The other program that we're gonna do, the Entrepreneur Program, is we're gonna once again run the Women Entrepreneurship Week, okay? So for all those of you, especially if you have women students out there who are entrepreneurs, please do contact us. Please contact, right, Professor Zev Ash. Contact me. And we, but we will send out notices, we will send out invitations. And with a great success last year, and we hope to replicate it this year as well, and put your name out there, okay? All right, the last thing that, well, it's not the last thing, but one of the other things that we're planning to do this semester, we are really honored to have dynamite, okay? Caring, highly, you know, known people in the field, right, who have accepted to be part of our Advisory Board Council. They are just, I just can't speak, you know, so many praises about them. They are going to be helping us to connect us to the community out there. Not that our professors don't do that already, because they're already, right, practitioners, right, in their own right, besides being theorists. But they're gonna help us, and we're hoping to have a meet and greet to invite alumni and to invite all the current students, right, and faculty, and everybody who wants to participate, right, in this semester's event. It'll probably be virtually, but hopefully it'll be a lot of fun, okay? So those are the other events. Of course, in the spring semester, we hope to continue the entrepreneurship part of the aspect of the curriculum program. And hopefully, we're going to bring students to the business plan competition. And once again, our Professor Zev Ash will be heading up that initiative. Okay, so I think I'm gonna stop here, because I know we have a lot of new stuff that are coming up. But please do ask your questions in the chat box. And now we have a special surprise for everyone. Are you all ready? Okay, as you know, we are going to receive masks, Toro masks, because we do want everybody, right, to stay safe. Maybe not incognito, okay? But we want everybody to stay safe. And so the president, right, senior management, is actually mailing us to our homes these masks, okay? And Professor Charles Prillo, look at him. You can see him on your screen. He's actually showing off his mask, right, a Toro mask. But I don't know if many of you know, on, if you know a mask is working or not working, if it's effective or not effective. So Professor Prillo?
Yes, I'm very Dean Lorrain. Thank you very much, thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Before we begin our little demonstration tonight, I thought we would set the mood by... Just to give it... Okay, that's enough of that. I think everybody gets the message. So what I'm gonna do tonight, this is the official Toro mask. I wore it for the first time on Monday morning. I decided to take a drive into the city, and I visited both the Graduate School of Business and walked around exactly where the dean showed you all the photos. And I can assure you, folks, that everything is very much in place, very safe, very hygienic. And the building, the building property management also has some tremendous safety protocols in place as well. I even went to Nice Gas on West 31st Street. I'm happy to report that I saw the same thing. So the purpose of the little demonstration I'm gonna show you is to show you how good this mask is, not only at preventing whatever you may be exhaling from ejecting into the environment around you, but also in protecting you from anything that may be coming your way from other people. And it involves a little test. I'm using two matches. So please observe, I hope you could all see what I'm doing. I'm holding this match about seven or eight inches from me and trying to blow it out. As you could see, I was not able to blow out the mask, the match. This means that whatever I am exhaling, and as you saw, I was exhaling in a very exaggerated and forceful manner, whatever I was exhaling was not able to penetrate the mask, which means that it is providing protection to those that are around you, your friends, family, loved ones, students, et cetera. And it is also providing some very strong protection for you against what may be floating around out there in the environment as well. So I want you to know, it's a great mask. It's very comfortable. I wore it on Monday for several hours. I was walking around the city. I was going from West 40th Street down to 31st Street, coming back again. I found it to be, all in all, a good mask and pretty comfortable. So hopefully, you'll be getting yours in the mail soon if you haven't received it already. And I can assure you, it's quite good. And we're very appreciative that we've been able to do this little demonstration for you tonight. So thank you. God bless you all, stay safe, stay healthy. And I am looking forward to seeing my students in September as well. Thank you, Dean Lorrain.
Thank you, Charles, really. Thank you so much for showing that. I really appreciate it. I'm sure all those who are viewing this also appreciate it as well. You know, we may just put you on the YouTube channel, okay? And just blast this throughout, and you may become famous.
From your mouth to God's ears, Mary.
As you can see, we try to have fun, okay, aside learn, right, at the Toro Graduate School of Business. Does anybody have any questions on anything? I know we're trying to keep it short because it's late at night, but we wanted to give everybody a sense, right, of our reopening plan, you know, what we're going to be doing, right? And just pique your interest, right, on some of the initiatives that are going forth this semester. Does anybody have any questions? No, you're all quiet, you'll have the answers to everything. Now you're all quiet. You'll have the answers to everything. We answered everything for you. Please, if there's anything, do reach out. You have all our contact information. Any one of us are more than happy, right, we would be happy to answer all your questions and address any of your needs, okay? So if there are no more questions, I thank everyone on the panel for being here, for giving your input. I thank all our guests who joined us this evening. And welcome to a new semester. May this semester be the best one thus far, okay? Hope to see you all. Oh, wait a minute, there's a question.
Sorry, you have a question in the Q and A chat box.
Yes, thank you. I just, just before I was logging up, okay. How will Professor manage to communicate, interact with students via Zoom and on campus at the same time? Well, Charles, you have your hand raised. Did you want to answer that?
Yes, only because Molly is one of my students. And Molly, I would like to remind you that I emailed all of you already asking you to respond to that question directly to me at charles.priolo@toro.edu, no later than by September first. And let me know whether you're going to be attending live and in person or via Zoom.
Yes, now all, the classrooms, okay, are gonna have cameras, all right? And so what's gonna happen is then they're all set up or in the process of being set up where they can, just like we do it. Well, this is a webinar. This is not a Zoom, correct? But you will be doing, we will, faculty members will be doing Zooming, right, they will use Zoom so that they can actually see all the participants and all the participants who are at home, who are choosing, right, to be on Zoom, they can also participate in the classroom. So you, hopefully you'll be able to see the students who are in the classroom. You definitely will be able to see the faculty member who's teaching, right? You'll be able to see what's, you know, being projected like we are, you know, and sharing screens, right? And you'll be able to, you know, ask questions and the like, okay? As I said, the only thing that we request, if you can kindly tell your faculty, right, tell your instructors if you are gonna be coming in or not, so we can actually make arrangements. And again, if we need to change classrooms because of spacing, we'll do whatever it takes in order to accommodate you, okay? So, but yes, we will all be wearing masks, so you'll have to speak a little louder, okay? Except for the ones doing Zoom, okay? You don't have to speak louder because we'll hear you. But the ones in the classroom, we're just gonna have to speak louder. And just so you know, the faculty are also, believe it or not, being trained, okay? So they'll know how to use technology, you know, in order to accommodate both the students in the classroom as well as the students on Zoom. As an extra precaution and for the student needs, because I know that sometimes on Zoom, maybe you may have missed something, right? Or you just want to go back and rehear the lecture. So we are gonna also be videotaping the lectures. And they will be placed on Canvas, so you may, you can review them at any point that you like. So I hope that answers your question. Please feel free to text in more. Let's see, are there any other questions? How far in advance should we tell professors, zoom in, the earlier the better, okay?
Molly's question.
Yeah, yeah. So the earlier the better. That is Professor Priolo going to bring fruit to class?
Here's the answer. As soon as we develop a teleportation device like they have on Star Trek, I'm gonna beam bananas to all my students.
Molly, that may be an impetus for you to come to class.
Don't we have a Toro drone?
That's a good idea.
I thought we had that.
That's a good idea, Skip. Good idea.
Dean, could you just maybe assure the students that the professor will be on the standing in terms of starting time and dismissal, because I'm sure the elevators and everything with all the other.
So what we're gonna do with the elevators, okay, and thank you for bringing that up. What we're doing with the elevators is the following. Everybody has to enter through the two thirty-two west, right, Forty Street entrance. That's because we're doing spot checks, you know, et cetera, et cetera, correct? However, because they're going to be concurrent classes that are occurring every evening, right, not to make it very congested and everybody, you know, hovers over the elevator. Because remember, the elevators on Forty Street, only four passengers are allowed per elevator, per ride, going up or down, right, to maintain social distancing. So what we're going to do is we're gonna put a sign up on each door. And one classroom is going to exit, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but we do have another exit on the eleventh floor. And that exit is where, if you're familiar, you know, on the back wall where Travis and Mohammed sit, the staff members, okay? Anyway, behind that wall, so to speak, there's an exit door. And those exit doors, there are, there are two other elevators and they lead to the exit on two eighteen west Forty Street. So we're gonna have, so the students are gonna be directed and faculty, right, whoever's there, right, will be directed to either please exit through the two eighteen side of the floor or the two thirty-two. And I'm sure the faculty there will coordinate so all the classes aren't, you know, let out exactly all at the same time, right? We all have to have a little sensitivity and I'm sure you all will, right, in the classroom. I know the faculty have been absolutely amazing through all of this. And so they'll be able to guide you. I am not worried about that whatsoever, okay? And no escape route, okay, guys, all right?
I think there are a few more questions that came in the chat box.
Is there a recording of this meeting? I believe it is. I can see the little red flashing light being recorded. And Ella, I think, has reminded me that, yes, we will be recording it. If you'd like us to send it to you, we'll be more than happy to. Okay, let's see. How will Professor, okay, I think I answered all the questions?
Will the students be able to bring something to eat?
Yeah.
Where, where could they eat it? Where do they discard it?
Sure. So, um, great question. So the fountains have been blocked off, correct? No one's allowed to use the fountain. No one will be allowed to use, you know, the refrigerator, no one. I'm sorry, what you're hearing is thunder, okay? I apologize in advance. There's no shooting. It's thunder outside my window, okay? So, sorry, that's a bad joke. I know, I apologize, but it just sounded like a really loud bang, like something hit the floor, right? So anyway, so, you know, you, no usage of refrigerator, no usage of microwave, right? That will no longer be allowed. However, student, you can, right, and faculty members, you can bring a drink. We just, you know, and little white snack, whatever, correct? However, we do ask you not, you know, to sort of just move your mask a little, correct? So you can eat or drink and then sort of, you know, chew with the mask on, let's put it that way, okay? And then obviously, you know, you can throw it out in the receptacle. The rooms are spotless and every single night they're going to be disinfected. So when everybody leaves, there's gonna be a major cleaning on a regular daily basis, okay?
I can attest to the fact, having been there this Monday, that it is absolutely immaculate.
Yeah.
That's great. That's great.
Okay, so let me just read Q and A. When will courses appear on Canvas? The courses have already begun to appear on Canvas. Not all faculty members have quote unquote "published" their coursework because that's what they have to do in order for the students to see it. But I am sure that they will publish it very soon, okay? By the end of this month or by the first, right, of September, that they will publish the course, you know? So, you know, but everything is going to be also on Canvas, you know, recording of the session and all of the work that's normally associated, right, during the semester. Okay, so Molly had another question. Will we receive a text message to enter the building with the health questionnaire? Will that be set up on our mobiles? Do we need to sign up for these texts? No, I believe there was, there was a communication sent out to all of Toro by the President with the link for the questionnaire.
Yes.
If you did not receive it, you know what? Selena, can I kindly ask you, I know Selena is on this, as you know. Selena is our manager, right, Administrative Manager for the Graduate School of Business. I'm gonna ask Selena to kindly, right, remind me and Travis that we can send out a communication to all students and faculty members with the link once again, okay? So we'll do that. How to access job internship database? Skip, do you want to take that question? There was a question raised on how are we going to manage, how are the students, right, gonna access the job internship database?
Well, as we've had, as we've done throughout the time that I've been there, we've been posting openings. But we may, one thing I was, we have been talking about segregating the postings as jobs and internships. And I'll, I'll make sure to look into that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Somebody was unmuted, so I just muted them.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, that was me, Selena. I wasn't able to unmute before, the storm, so. I'm sorry, I'll unmute myself again, but I did hear what you said, Dean.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we will post job openings as we have been doing since the time we've opened up the Career Center. And maybe what we will do this year, make a special effort to post internships separately. But you will be able to find those, those postings as well. And there'll always be a posting in front of my, the office with any new jobs. And we have a job posting board right outside my office to the left and to the right of the door. But you'll be able to find it and you'll be able to find me anywhere.
Yeah, if you log onto Toro One, right, on the main page and you scroll all the way to the bottom on the right-hand side, you're gonna find Professor Vakarina's information and the job postings, the full-time job postings, okay? And we'll also, this time, we'll make a special effort to actually separate out the internships, right, from the full-time jobs. So thank you for your questions.
Great questions.
Anything else? Okay, again, if you think of anything else, please don't be shy. We are here to help one another, right? We're all in this together. If anything changes, we will let everybody know. Look, we were able to actually transition from delivering all our classes face-to-face, right, to hybrid mode in a blink of an eye, so to speak, right, in March. And we were quite successful even back then. And now that all these months have gone by, our technology have improved and we have access to all of this, you know, restructuring and, and more technology that has been added, you know, to our classroom in order to deliver, you know, the quality education that our students deserve, right, that you deserve. It's gonna be a cinch for us to go back, right, to teaching online if we need to. So rest assured, don't, don't, don't worry, don't be afraid. We are all here. We're all in the same boat. We're all together, okay? Again, but we're gonna give you the choice, the students, whether you want to come in person or not, or, you know, hold your classes virtually, so please spread the word. Don't worry. If you have, if you know or you're friends with international students, tell them as well not to worry. Because since our classes are gonna be in hybrid mode, they are fully in compliance. We're fully in compliance with the, you know, with ICIS rules and regulations, okay? The other, only last thing that I want to leave you with is that I think there was a miscommunication that those of you, or some of you thought that when you register for classes, that you would get a bill right away. And the answer is no. You do not get a bill right away. You just get a document just showing you what the bill will look like, so to speak. But you do not, just because you registered for classes does not mean that your payments are due, okay? So please feel free to register for classes. Please do so, so we know and we can better gauge, right? So we know how many students we have in the classroom, so we know if we need to open up more classes, right, or how we can better serve our students. So we'll encourage you to do that. You will not be receiving a bill, right, until classes begin. And then you still have thirty days in which to make a payment, okay? So please rest assured, you don't have to be fearful that, oh, I don't have the money, you know, right away. In addition, right, there, there is a payment plan. So actually, the sooner you register for classes, the sooner you can spread out your payment and have lower monthly payments, so to speak, okay? Once again, thank you all for joining us this evening. I would like to thank all the panelists, all of you, and to a great and fruitful semester. Good night, all.
Good night. Have a good weekend. Thank you.
You too. Bye-bye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.